We'll call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk color roll please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none, ma'am.
And we'll start with the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week 2025. Whereas the city of Streeter, Illinois is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Streeter, Illinois and visiting. And whereas fire remains of serious public concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries in any household devices introduces unique fire risks. And whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, scooters and toys are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged and privately charged can overheat, start a fire or explode. And whereas National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action by only listed products, charge batteries safely and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, an improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas property disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas the Streeter Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrences of fires through prevention, safety education and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Safety, Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home serves to remind us the importance of using, charging and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Therefore, I, Mayor Beadie, Mayor of Streeter, do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th as Fire Prevention Week throughout Streeter, Illinois. All right, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you have comment for council, please come to the podium, state your name, and you do have a three-minute time limit. Mr. Councilor?
Yeah, my name is Jeff Burkhard. I'm here on behalf of my son who doesn't work at 311. But unfinished business items law because we are more opposed to it.
I know.
My son lives just to the north of that, and he uses that street all the time. And they want to close it off, and if you do close it off, you should close the whole thing off. Because they're going to be pulling in from Lower Avenue and going to turn around my son's driveway and say, so, you know, either the whole thing needs closed off or not.
Thank you. I'm sorry. This one's denied. This one's approved. Any further public comments? I'm from the old building that was in these mainstreams.
I'm Olivia. Misses Stady and nanny with me. I just wanted to follow up on my email. I sent that September, but since I kind of heard that in regards to my formal complaint against Councilman Avery for harassment, I just wanted to know when we would expect to get a follow-up on that.
I have turned it over. Our attorney received it the same day, and so she will be reaching out, but anything further? We'll be in touch with the city manager, and I have to be in touch with you to schedule a meeting sometime next week.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Should I go first?
Yes, please.
I just have a question. Last week, when we were at the planning commission for the rezoning of 112 West Morrell, and it was denied by the planning commission. But here it says that it's approved for the, or approval, there's a notion of the denial. And then this one says the approving of the change. And then this one here says resolution, resolution denial. So when they did that, when they denied, when they denied for the multi-family, was that for all of us?
Mayor, would you like to? Yes, please. So final action needs to be taken by the city council. And the city council has two options, and that's what you see on the agenda. One alternative is to agree with the planning commission and to deny the rezoning. The other option would be for the city council to grant the rezoning. So the agenda just shows the city council has two options, and they will make the final decision tonight.
I understand that, but with it being all these options, that's what my question was. So can they deny one option and then approve the other?
Okay, that was my question. I definitely. Any other public comment? Then we will go to unfinished business, item one, ordinance 2025-29, an ordinance authorizing the vacation of a public city right-of-way to vacate 140 feet of the north 50-foot North-South Council Road located east of 818 Bizarre Street, Streeter, Illinois, LaSalle and Livingston Counties. Can I get a motion and second to remove the ordinance from the table and consider the authorization? Second. Okay. Mr. Gary with the motion and Mr. Reed with the second. Any discussion? At last, council, I know we tabled for a month. I mean, we wanted to see where the water line was for the easement. So that was marked out. We got to look at that today. Okay. Sure. So we should call the roll on the motion to remove from the table. Clerk color roll please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Okay, and then we can go into discussion. Any questions or comments?
Is this on item number two?
Item one. Item one, unfinished. Has everyone gotten to take a look and review property today? Or, okay. Any comments or questions? And if not, I'll have clerk color roll. Well, do we have a, we need a motion to approve the ordinance? And a reminder, so we need four affirmative votes to pass. Okay, so Mr. Gary with the motion. Can you get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, same to Mr. Gary and Mr. Reed with a second.
So which option, are we just voting to take it off?
This is the right-of-way action. We're not on the rezoning action yet. So as I understand, recommendation from staff was to deny vacating right-of-way. So a motion, a vote no would deny vacating right-of-way. Okay. Okay, so a vote, I'm gonna write that down, a vote no would deny vacating right-of-way. Okay.
I think all the council members went by and looked at it today. Probably the most traffic I always had in one day all year, but. I'm inclined to vote against this. I know the homeowner has said he would make arrangements so there would be access to that water line if need be, but we can't always count on that owner living there forever. You don't know who the future owners are going to be. I don't know what personalities we're going to be dealing with in the future, so. Knowing, having that unknown of the future, I'm inclined to be against this. I just want to let everybody know why.
Any other comment or question? So I went through, and it was a little, I think a little busier, it was straight than I expected. So it seems like it's mid-block. So that I'm probably leaning towards what Mr. Reed had to say on that one. I understand the concerns, the homeowner that requested the vacation for here. I just know we have to plan for today and 23, 24 years from now for what would happen, so. I think that's kind of where I sit, but if there's no further, I'll have clerk. I'll have clerk color roll, please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Okay, we'll go to new business. Item two is a motion to receive and place on file, Plank Commission Recommendation 2025-05 to the city council. Be it a motion and second to place on file, Plank Commission Recommendation.
So moved.
So Mr. Shire and Mr. Gary with the second. Discussion.
So, Mayor, sorry. So yes, last week's Plank Commission, Plank Commission had a public hearing and heard from the petitioners, who I don't see tonight, as well as several residents in the neighborhood, lone residents. They attended the meeting, were in opposition, they were none there in support. So Plank Commission looked at all the potential options, that if the property were to be rezoned, what it could be, and related to that, then unanimously recommended denial of the application. So that's what comes forward to you tonight is the Plank Commission, their finding that they were in their packet, but recommended not rezoning to allow for the special, or for the multi-family, so stay a single family have denied. Cheryl, walk you through the intricacies of the next two votes, but one is to approve or one is to deny, but Plank Commission recommendation was to deny.
So the vote before the council now is just to put that recommendation on file? Which I recommend. Okay. So any further discussion?
No.
Just to place on file?
Just to place on file.
Okay, clerk, color roll, please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Aye. So item three, this is going to be the fun one, right, with the two choices? So you have two alternatives. One is a resolution that would agree with the Plank Commission and results in the denial of the rezoning request. So kind of like the previous ordinance, a yes vote on the resolution means the rezoning request is denied. If council wants to pass the ordinance granting the rezoning, that would be ordinance number 25-42. And because a written petition was filed by 25% of the landowners within 250 feet, it would require a supermajority vote by city council or the ordinance to pass. So at this stage, it would be up to one of you to make a motion on the resolution, and if that resolution passes, then we just skip the next item, you don't have to vote on two things. Or a motion would be in order to approve the ordinance. So that was our two options.
So if I make a motion to approve this ordinance, 2025-36, to deny?
That, if you, yes, you could make a motion to approve resolution.
Please.
Yes. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Mr. Gary is making a motion.
I'll second.
And Mr. Dango with the second. And that was alternative one, approving resolution 2025-36, a resolution denying the petition of Daniel Waltz's R. T. R. is on the property commonly known as 110 West Morrell Street from R1B Single Family Residential District to E3 Multi-Family Residential District for the city of Streeter, LaSalle and Livingston Counties, Illinois. Any discussion? So again, a yes vote results in the denial. Yes. Clerk, please color roll.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye.
With that, we can remove item four from the agenda. Okay, item five is a motion to receive and place on file, Plank Commission Recommendation 2025-06 to the city council. This is recommending approval and granting an award of a facade grant to Strike Point Properties LLC, 2416 North Bloomington Street, Streeter, Illinois, in the amount of $15,000. Can I get a motion and second, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Reed with the motion, Mr. Gary with the second. We'll go into discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, so Plank Commission met on this one last week as well, and this is a unanimous recommendation to award the facade grant, and this is Bullmore, so it could have a strike point, but this is the Bullmore property. If it were wanted, they're going to paint the entire building, the facade will only be the part covered by the grant. But you'll see that the brick, I think it's gray and red tones, it's kind of like a bowling alley arrow around the lane, and they're doing some siding removal and replacement to work to the doorway there and to kind of continue on with stuff they've already done with their rear garden and then the state improvement of site as well. Facade grant will just cover the painting and the work to the siding on the facade facing toward.
And because this one is not in the downtown, it doesn't necessarily have to follow the same rules.
Correct, so yeah, since it's not downtown, it doesn't have to match the character. And Plank, or the Plank Commission did make a kind of a finding that since the building was never previously painted, it would not consider necessarily maintenance because they have a brick building that they're not going to, the look will change. So that's the little net that they're kind of, that they worked through to recommend award. So if it's, so it's outside the downtown, they don't have to follow those historic rules.
Okay, any other comments? Clerk, color roll, please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Code item six, resolution 2025-37, approving and granting an award. So the first was our Plank Commission recommendation. This is approving and granting the facade grant to owner of Strike Point Properties LLC, 2416 North Bloomington Street, Streeter, Illinois, in the amount of $15,000. Can I get a motion and second, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Shire with the motion and Mr. Dango with the second. Any other discussion? Okay, I just want to thank them because they're doing a lot of work out there, and I'm very impressed with their, their passion and everything that they're doing to publicize and market the place, so. No further comment, I'll request the clerk to color roll, please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Item seven, resolution 2025-33, a resolution authorizing a three-year extension of the contract with Motorola Solutions Lease for body worn cameras from Motorola Solutions for the Streeter Police Department. Can I get a motion and second, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Gary with the motion and Mr. Reed with the second.
All right, good evening, council and mayor. In May, in 2022, we purchased body worn cameras for our officers. As a result of the safety act, we were required to have them by July 2025. We got ahead of game and purchased them. We went live in May of 2023. We actually didn't purchase, we leased through Motorola. Five-year lease allowed us to obtain new body cameras halfway through our lease. We're at that point now. I got off the phone with Motorola a couple of weeks ago. They advised that they will send out a new body cameras at the end of the month, which will get us to 2028. During our conversation, they made a recommendation of extending our lease for another three years, at which time, 23rd of 2028, we will get new body cameras again for our officers, all our warranty, and we continue to 2031. The price they provided us is actually about $300 a year less than we're currently paying at a budgeted forward, which seemed the recommendation from the council to extend our lease.
We also want to point out that currently our cameras have about eight or nine-hour battery power grid, which doesn't get us quite through our 12-hour shift. These new cameras will have a 13, 15-hour battery, which should get us through our entire shift. Also, there's all kinds of technical upgrades that have come in the last two and a half years, which we can use, so it's good.
So what are they doing with the batteries now? Partway through the shift, they're coming in and getting new batteries?
Yeah.
We charge the cars too.
Yeah, each of our cars have a dock station where they can charge, but a lot of the guys find it easier since there's four guys working. We have docks that house 12, 16 cameras, so they can just come in and swap out, just do a hot swap and get things done.
So this will cure the logistics problem?
Yes, and the new cameras are coming regardless. Those are coming at the end of the month, those will get us to 2028. We're just looking from 2028 to 2031, so that way we're not back here looking for the recommendation of purchasing new body cameras or entering the lease again.
I'd say seldomly we get a lower price when we extend, so.
Not only that, over time, things break down. One of our docking stations in our station now no longer can charge a camera, so others are probably going to break down over time. So getting a new docking station with new cameras will be a plus as well.
Any other comments or questions?
Nice work, Mr. Wood, sounds like a win.
Thank you.
Clerk, color roll, please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye.
Item eight, resolution 2025-34, a resolution authorizing a two-year extension of the contract for professional services to provide ambulance service to the city of Streeter and surrounding areas between Kurtz Paramedic Services doing business as American Medical Response Solutions, AMR, New Lenox, Illinois and the city of Streeter. Can I get a motion and second, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Dango with the motion, Mr. Shire with the second. We'll go into discussion.
According to your contract with AMR, as far as we do have, kind of that contract and option for two additional years, staff is recommending that we take advantage of the two additional years. The increase is 2.1%, I have the actual dollar amounts. 1,325,442 dollars, so that's third income here.
Any comments or questions regarding this? So this one, we did pre-negotiate, it was a five-year, the first three years, and then we had the action to extend for another two, one or two, when this was signed, so for me, it's hard to believe we're three years in. But here we are, so it's going fast.
Yeah.
But I believe we've been happy with that service so far and.
Yeah. I think things are going well. The department and AMR are working well together. They're doing phenomenal work on our community. I think there was a report a couple of months ago about the above-average record for Kurtz saved, so. Can you run?
And we're able to just hire one of the personnel for fire departments, full-time, from AMR, so I believe they're, they have an ad looking for replacements, if anyone knows of EMTs. Any other comment or questions? Clerk, color roll. I'll keep this up for just a moment, so I'll see if I can manage this. Clerk, color roll, please. Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Thank you.
Item, item nine, resolution 2025-35, a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase playground equipment for Game Time, Charleston, North Carolina, for Merlot Park, or Logan's Oasis, for the city of Streeter Counties of LaSalle and Livingston, Illinois. May I request a motion and second?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Gary with the motion, Mr. Reed with the second. Any discussion?
Well, my kids are in their twenties, I have no brain children, but I think that this is the narrowest city that that we have a lot of contributed money to build an important playground, brand new playground. Pretty exciting. This city shares equipment to help complete the plan, and it's going to be a very nice, still some additional work that staff will have to do in terms of arranging for contractors to actually write the equipment and sidewalks and curving and padding material, but, so there'll be additional requests coming before you, but this is the next step. It's going to get all of it put in order and paid for. And we received an email that this was contributed money is going to be deposited with the city over the next couple of days.
For the first portion.
And so things move forward with your approval.
Any questions, what we discussed last week at the committee of the whole?
What's, what's the timeline looking like on this next spring?
Probably, I would think so. Once we approve, or don't approve tonight, if we approve tonight, then we will take the layout over to Mr. Palm, and he will have to do some engineering work as far as bid documents, and then we put it out to bid for the installation. Because Jeff would, the public works is very short on manpower to do the project of this size.
Yeah, Public Works did a great job for American Park.
Yes, this is about five or six times that, if not more.
Is the intention still for Public Works to do the sand prep? Pour in place? I don't know what you call that.
Not determined, yes.
So rougher, pour in place, or for mulch, or surfaceing.
Well, I don't know if we've decided that part yet.
I think it'll come down to what we get for bids on everything.
We're going to bid it out as alternates, and then you'll have the options in front of you. We'll go see it done, we, we have the, see if we can do it, we have the material and have seen the instructions, now it's a matter of figuring it out.
Any other comment or question? Clerk, color roll, please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Items 10, 11 and 12 are all going to be very similar. We will start with item 10, which is ordinance 2025-38, an ordinance approving a contract to purchase 1203 South Bloomington Street from LaSalle County as trustee for the city of Streeter, LaSalle and Livingston Counties, Illinois. I agree, get the motion and second, please.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Dango with the motion and Mr. Gary with the second. Go into discussion.
Well, according to my, it is a recommendation from our attorney and staff to purchase three properties, one in 1203 South Bloomington Street, second one on 605 Route Plum Street, and 412 Colorado Avenue. The properties are currently in the possession of the LaSalle County tax sale. The properties are currently in possession of the LaSalle County tenant's sale agent, and by actually getting title to the property, it avoids a lot of legal and staff expense and time in the future. Our intention would be to demolish the properties and make lots available for purchase, but we bring property owners for, to help community.
I would just make one note, I believe it's the Ralph Plum Street property, that there's some utility easements there that would be better off if you wanted to property outright.
Are we mowing and maintaining those properties now?
Are they on your list of mowing? Because we, we mow properties that have deuces against them, and then we file pit liens for.
Right.
So I don't know if this has.
I don't have that in front of me at the moment.
There's a long list of properties we mow.
They have been mowed in the past, yes.
All right, any comment or question? Clerk, color roll please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item 11, Ordinance 2025-39, approving a contract to purchase 605 Ralph Plum Street from LaSalle County as trustee for the City of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois. Can you get a motion and second please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Reed with the motion, Mr. Gary with the second. Any discussion? So this is the one with the utility easements that we'll want to keep.
That house doesn't look in that bad a shape compared to the other two.
This is not the house, it's just, it's a vacant lot, with a sewer running through it.
Okay, I must have looked at the wrong property.
There, there's, there's a house there, but this lot is not, the lot for sale is not that house. It's next to it.
Okay, clerk, color roll please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item 12, Ordinance 2025-40, an ordinance approving a contract to purchase 412 Colorado Avenue from LaSalle County as trustee for the City of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois. Can you get a motion and second please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Shire with the motion, and Mr. Dango with the second. Any discussion on 412 Colorado? Okay, clerk, color roll please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item 13, Ordinance 2025-41, an ordinance authorizing the sale of 1418 North Sterling Street to Maria O. Flores for the City of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois. Can you get a motion and second please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gary with the motion, Mr. Shire with the second. Any discussion?
Well, Maria Flores has made a written offer to purchase each of the two lots, mainly south of her house, $705 each, it's been available for years. And the city has really encouraged neighbors to be buying these vacant lots and take care of them, so I think it's gonna be a win-win. If one or two fewer lots, the city will have to maintain, you know, allow this property owner to expand her property. I think she has a plan to put a shed in, making progress to the lot.
And this is, it's one address with two PIN numbers?
There's two PIN, well, there could be two addresses, but we're just using one, because they're both vacant.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Clerk, color roll please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item 14 is the motion to approve five-year road plan for 2025 through 2030. Get a motion and second please.
So moved.
Second.
That was pretty close. Daniel, Mr. Dango with the motion, and Scott with the second. For this, we approved or re-reviewed last week at the committee of the whole, so this is officially making a motion to approve the plan going forward. Comments, questions, discussion? Okay, clerk, color roll please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item 15, Consent Agenda, request a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of $1,274,000, two, sorry, 274, 277, and 99 cents. This will be for the fund warrant total minutes of the county, city council from August 12th and August 20th, 2025. Financial reports for the month of August 2025, and approving a chamber of commerce event at Heritage Park on September 26th and 27th with passable vendors at Heritage Park. Can you get a motion and second please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Reed with the motion, Mr. Gary with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, color roll please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item 16, any official comments? Any comments for?
I just want to thank everybody who came to Pluto Fest over the weekend. They had Pluto Fest with the food truck festival. It was a big success, beautiful weather, it was very well attended. And I want to thank everybody, especially the sponsors. I want to thank Jeff and his, his crew, they did a great job, everything we asked for, they took care of. Thank you, Jeff.
Any other official comments? I will also give Public Works a thank you, they did a nice job preparing the park for the event, and thank you, thanks. And I, whoever you had on staff for the day, someone said, that is the nicest guy, so I just passed a compliment on, because those are, I know there are few in the park between, when you get compliments, so. There are no further to the official comments, I'll request a motion and second to adjourn.
I'll do it.
Okay, Mr. Reed with the motion, and Mr. Gary with the second. Clerk, color roll please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye.